Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening, everybody. The first item is we need to add an item to our agenda, which is going to be under new business. It's going to be listed as nine D, and that is a discussion about a demographic study. Do I have a motion to approve and add that? Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second? Thanks, David. All in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to the first item, which is reported the chairman. Well, it's the first meeting of the new school year, so welcome back, everybody. We've all had a long summer, and we ended up not having any board meetings because of quorons during the summer, so this is our first meeting since, oh geez, June. Wow. But the first item is the acknowledgement of the bags. We want to thank Wholesale Computers. My computer just went quiet. Wholesale Computer Exchange of Trumbull for $1,000 used to purchase the cloth bags that everybody got for our staff with the logo and Monroe Public Schools on them. This was given out at the convocation to all our staff members. That's it. So, anybody have questions on that?
Perfect, what a perfect apropos timing. Yeah, thank you.
Exactly. Everybody can use them to go to the grocery store.
Yes, exactly.
Nobody's spending the 10 cents.
Exactly, exactly. We shall move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, David. We have a lot of warrants and a lot of one resignation and a number of appointments to go through, so Jack, do you want to go through?
Sure, if it's all right. I'd like to speak to the resignation and have the principals speak to the appointments when we get to the superintendent's agenda. So, for the one resignation, Dana Fermender just was appointed as assistant principal in Trumbull, and we're very proud of her achievement and sorry to see her go, but she was ready to move on to the next level, so we wish her the best in her new position.
All right, who do you want to bring up first to talk?
So, with principals, why don't we start out like we did in convocation? Jake, if you want to come up first.
Stand over here.
Right, the mic is great.
Wherever you'd like, go for the mic.
Welcome back, everyone. I'll start by saying I'm pleased to say I don't have much to say about the opening, so that's a good thing in high school. We had a really good opening. Our buses actually all arrived ahead of schedule on the first day, and we'll always take that, so that was great. No phone calls about that, so that was good. The teachers came out at the end of the day and waved goodbye to all the kids as the buses came by, and the buses honked, and the kids waved back, and we had a good time with that, and I've seen a few Snapchats about that, so that was fun. The rest of the week honestly was really quite smooth. We put a few tiny, tiny new security procedure changes in place, but really the feedback's been really well received by the community, so that's definitely a positive for us. We did our first fire drill. This week, we have a couple of meetings. Our ninth grade orientation to people services is this week, and our athletic parent meeting is this week, so starting to get rolling with our parent meetings. And Friday's Hawaiian Shirt Day, so swing by. Yeah. We have two new staff members at the high school, but really they're transfers from Jockey Hollow, so they're not here because they're not new. They're new to us, but not new to you. You'll meet their replacements at Jockey Hollow. Both Steve Horvath and Lori Colville moved up to the high school from Jockey Hollow in English Department, so that was it for us for this year.
Great. Thank you, Jake.
All right.
Mr. Chicalini.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us here tonight. It's fun to talk about the start of the year. It's been a great start, and our school year really began before last Wednesday. We had a couple of events in August. We are very happy to say our summer music enrichment program got off the ground this year. We didn't have the enrollment a year ago, as many of you will remember, but this year we had the enrollment, and we had a week-long music camp. Went very, very well. We had directors with the students. The directors were from all different parts of the state, including one of the music directors from Western Connecticut State University, working with the children in one of the ensembles. So, it was a great week. We had our technology workshop, which has become an annual event for us. We had over 100 families attend that. That was awesome in August. And then last Wednesday, we had the pleasure of welcoming in 750 students to Jockey Hollow, main campus and STEM Academy in its entirety. Within that 750, we welcomed 20 new students to our campuses who enrolled over the summer, and the opening days have been just wonderful. Students came in, they were enthusiastic, they were high-energy, eager to get started, and the teachers greeted them with just a lot of enthusiasm. Everybody was ready for the beginning of a new year, so it's all good news. Although we have a number of transfers to Jockey Hollow, they were all within district. We do have one staff member new to the Monroe School District, and that is Jonathan Mercado. Jonathan's a graduate from Sacred Heart and has been teaching in Derby most recently for the last five years. Jonathan is a very recently acquired hire, and so much so that he has been managing professional commitments and trying to establish himself here because he wants to get right in with the children. Unfortunately, tonight was one of those professional commitments that caused a conflict, so you could not be here with us this evening, but I wanted to introduce him to you. I think he's going to be a great fit for our schools, so thank you again for letting us share with you.
Thanks. Mrs. Cosisco.
Yes, I come with an entourage.
Ah, nice.
I am so pleased to introduce to all of you three new staff members at Fawn Hollow. We have Jenna Rice, who's our new PE teacher, Marissa DeSanti, who's teaching fourth grade, and Jessica Komerowski, who's teaching fourth grade. So, we welcome them. They're off to a terrific start, and, you know, wonderful members of the Fawn Hollow family. So, everybody's off to a great start, just like at Massey and Jockey Hollow. Our opening was very smooth. It's just so heartwarming to see all the children get off the bus and come up and hug, and they're so happy to be back. And, you know, that doesn't happen without a lot of work behind the scenes. Our staff has been in over the summer. Our custodians have worked so hard to make our building absolutely beautiful. The buses are arriving on time and just about departing on time, so it's really terrific. Jen is having a great time on bus duty.
It's my favorite.
You know, as I walked through the hallways this morning, I was just, you know, once again thinking how grateful I am to be working here and how much I appreciate the work of all of you, too, because already on only the fourth day of school, I walk into the kindergarten classrooms, and they're all working at their literacy stations, independently, a lot of them, on the fourth day of school. And our first graders are doing their first writing-on-demand piece, so they're writing a story across the pages, a story with a beginning and a middle and an end. And our second graders are all involved in their readers' workshop mornings. A great time to go to those classrooms, because everybody's involved in literacy. But they had started chopping in their book baskets and learned that they're going to grow like beanstalks as readers, and that they could read as many as 250 books this year. And so, it's just, there's all this enthusiasm, and, you know, we work really hard at Fawn Hollow, as I know the other elementary schools do, too, to make this the start of the school year, you know, the best days ever, because we're creating lifelong learners, and we want our children to love school, because they've got a lot of years ahead of them. And so, I'm sure we were doing equally wonderful things up in fourth grade today. I didn't make it up there, but I wanted to tell, what were we doing in fourth grade today?
Sure. So, today was a lot of kind of getting to know them as learners in different subjects, some math problem-solving tasks, which they all eagerly jumped right in, getting them set up with Just Write Books and how a workshop period goes. Well, Just Write Books.
A lot of workshop setup, just going through the library, how to check out a book, how to put a book back, so tomorrow we'll be in full swing with our workshop.
Your Columbia dollars at work. And PE equally active, right?
Very active. Nice and hot outside, so it's nice and hot inside, too.
So, we're off to a great start, and thank you for letting us share.
Great. Thank you, Becky. Mr. Lazar.
Thank you for having us. I wanted to echo something that Jake had said earlier about the buses. I looked at Mike Lawler last Friday, the head of the bus company. I looked at him and said, "Mike, buses have been a non-issue," so that was probably the best compliment I could give him. But before we opened up last Wednesday, we did have a kindergarten ice cream social, Italian ice social, thanks to Jessica Duska, a board member, and the kindergartners got used to the back playground, to their teachers. It was done by grade-level colors and classroom colors. It was really kind of cute, but it's a good way to start the year on Monday. On Wednesday, we welcomed in 429 students, which is ironically the same number of students we exited with last June. I do have two more supposedly on the books, but I don't have them registered yet. We have brought in 21 students this year, which is about average for us. Two from Germany, one from China, and one from France. So, our ELL dollars are hard at work at Stepney Elementary School. But the most proud I am of the staff and the students is to talk about new staff, and I would like to introduce Christina Falconeri, who's our new kindergarten teacher, and she is with me this evening. We stand up. But in closing, we're off to a great start. It seems to be a seamless transition, and I have nothing but praise and thanks to the board of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thanks, Bruce.
Mrs. Redson.
So, Monroe Elementary also has started with a really great start. I don't have much to compare it to, being my first year here, but it seems really smooth to me, that's what people are telling me.
Oh, you have four months last year, right?
We've really just been focusing on social-emotional learning of our students so far, so not only physical safety, we've been doing just a lot of your back-to-school drills, making sure everyone knows where to go in the event of emergency, but then also just focusing on our Work Hard Be Kind initiative. So, we're talking in our classrooms a lot and as a whole school about what it means to work hard and be kind, and we've just been thinking about how we can take that across the school year. So, that's what we've been working on, and I'm excited to be here and continue with the full year at Monroe.
Great.
I do have one new staff member, Alexandra Nelson. She's a speech and language pathologist, and she's actually shared between Monroe Elementary and Massey.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Jack, just, because I screwed up, because we said it's just like convocation. We do have one other staff member, long time in the making, so we're very excited to get this year, and that is Jessica Champagne, who's standing right now. Jessica is our, Jessica is our new point eight school social worker, working at all the schools housed here at Massey, working pretty closely with Dan O'Doy and Jake, but also going around to all the other schools as well. And then she's also point eight, the other point two, working as a town social worker, so working really closely with the first smackman's office and Kathy Lombardi and the folks over there. So, we're very excited to have Jess.
So, I'd just like to say a couple of quick thank yous. Thank you to all of our faculty, our administrators. The opening really was exceptionally smooth all the way around us because of all of their collective work. The new teacher orientation was excellent. Joe and Sheila and everybody involved did an amazing job putting that together, and the new teachers brought so much to those two days of learning, and I know they're going to do so much for our students as they move forward into their years with us here in the Monroe Public School. So, great opening and really a great prelude to the good work that's going to happen throughout this year. To our new teachers, you don't need to stay at this point if you don't want to. There's probably homework and prep, so you can leave unless you really want to hear the rest of the meeting. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Hold on, somehow my computer just shut off. I apologize, my computer just, for some reason, shut my system off. I nailed with the agenda. Thank you. Well, does anything else on the consent agenda, because I can say we haven't voted on that yet, so does any more discussion before we move on to a vote? Yes.
I just have a comment, Jack. I wanted from a safety committee standpoint, just to say congratulations and thank you for all the work with getting the bus schedules on PowerPoint. I think we've been talking about it in the works for a good year and a half or so. I just wanted to say thank you. It's nice to see that come full circle, and you got it done, you and your staff, so thank you, that was huge.
Thanks, Dave. The feedback's been very positive about that, too.
Good.
Great. Anything else? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. We probably don't have any Massey reps yet.
Next time.
Next time? Okay, Jake. Does any of our, any other members have?
Yeah, I do. Thanks, Donna. Alan, you want me to talk about the orientation?
Yeah, sure.
On July 23rd, Alan, Jack, Joe, and I met at the corporate office to talk about the new BOE member orientation. It's been on our agenda for a long time, just to try to come up with some kind of better way of welcoming board members and getting them up to speed as quickly as possible, although there's always a lot to learn. So, we met, very good discussion. We went back and forth, looked at what CAB had, looked at creating some stuff, but not recreating everything, and that work is being done, and Alan and I will keep you up to date on that. We're going to meet again at some point. And then on July 25th, we had a pension committee meeting. Jack, Jessica, and I were there, report that town pension and BOE pension is doing well, and nothing more to report on it, but we did have a meeting.
Thank you so much. Anybody else have committee reports? All right, we will move on to public participation. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Patrick O'Hara, 282 Shelton Road. I'm also a member of the class of 1982. I wanted to talk about item 9C. So, about 40 years ago, I stepped on an athletic field here at Massey High School for the first time and was greeted by a whirling dervish of a man named Carl Bodnar. This was a man who could run backwards faster than most of us could run forwards, and as I understand it, he's given 51 years of service. I've had the pleasure of knowing Carl for 40 of those years, and I cannot think of somebody more deserving of an honor of having a weight room and wellness center named after him. So, I just wanted to come out tonight and say that, because, you know, not only did Carl teach a lot of young men and women athletics, he taught life, and so I think it's an honor well-deserved for him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Brett.
Anybody else? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the report of the superintendent, and we've already covered it.
Yeah, we have.
Yay.
And next item on there is the enrollment update, and I've put out one sheet for you. It's got yellow and green on it. And just to give you an overall snapshot of where we are with enrollment at this point in the year, the one disclaimer I need to share with you before we actually get into the numbers is the enrollment at this point in the year is always very, very inaccurate. I'll give you one example of many reasons why. Currently, we have eight new students in the registration process, not reflected in this number. So, at this point in the year, there's coming and going. There's students who have moved and haven't informed us, and that has an impact on these numbers, too. So, these are very rough numbers, and that's a large part of the reason why the state of Connecticut doesn't consider enrollment official until October 1. Yeah, so just keep that in mind as we take a look. But at Massey, we're at 1017. It's an increase of four as of right now compared to October 1 last year. Jockey Hollow is at 750. That's down six since October 1 last year. Monroe L, 360 right now, which includes the pre-K, which there's more variation in that population, and so that's down six from 366, October 1 last year. Fawn Hollow is the winner, Mrs. Cosisco. They're up 18 at 568 as compared to 550 last year. Stepney L is 429, an increase of six over last year, and out placements were down one right now for those that are reported to the state. So, in total, we're about 15 more students than last year, but again, there's a lot of ins and outs, and this will change a number of times. When I go into Power School to look at the number, every day, the number's different. So, tomorrow, this number will change again and should be more stable by the time we get to October 1.
And you said right now there's eight more?
Eight, correct. Eight in the pipeline for new enrollments.
And so, we know where they fall?
That I couldn't tell you. All right, any questions on that at all?
Yeah, you know what, Jack? I do.
Yeah.
To jump ahead a little bit, I see that the last time we had the demographics was November 16th, right? I mean, 2016, yes?
Correct, yeah.
And it shows that he was off 18.
Correct.
And it gives a percentage.
Yep, based on this.
Mathematically, what's an acceptable percentage to be off? I know you can't delve into the future and know who's coming and who's not.
Right. If you look at it, what I did was I gave you, in that lower section, I gave you the Mylona McBroom original study is the top row in that section, January 2015. Those were their projections in 15. There was an update done November 30 of 16, and just so you know, for both of these, it's the median projection in both, so it's apples to apples. And then what I did was on the lowest row there, that row is our actual enrollments compared to the 1130-16 update.
Thank you.
And then beneath that is the difference, and then the lowest row there is the percentage difference. Every single year, they were within 1%,
Right.
which is quite honest. Frank has seen a lot of these studies. It's actually, it's very, it's excellent, is what it is, in terms of predicting where we are. It's hard to predict the future. It's never going to be perfect, but that's within a very small margin of error. Any other questions at all?
I didn't realize they were that close.
Yeah.
I thought there was a much wider margin between what Mylona approved that and what the actuals were.
Yeah, the original one, the other thing, and I know we'll get to this later, the original 2015, as you can see, there is further off. In 16, it was, in 16, it was much better, and I know we're jumping ahead a little bit. I talked with all, I gathered information from all the superintendents just to see what they're all doing. I was surprised what all the superintendents are doing with demographics across our area. They're all using demographers in some way, only because we don't have the expertise to do it internally. It's an inexact science. It's never going to be perfect. We're always going to find this variation, but they do it better than we can internally. And with so much at stake for us in terms of programming and funding, those projections really do help us a lot in making decisions, so I'll just share that.
Would that have been then in 2015, when they were, our population was going down, but not nearly as much as Mylona and McBroom had predicted?
And I think, you know, it's funny, I was on the phone today with Tom Suba from Mylona McBroom, and I forgot to ask him that very thing, but my speculation is this, if you think about those line graphs, our line was like this with enrollment, and I think when they came in to make their projections, we were just starting to do this. So, I think what they initially thought is, yeah, they're going to come out of it, but it's not quite as much as they thought we would have. And a year later, they're saying, okay, we're seeing something more. I have a line graph for you that I'll share later, but you'll see, I mean, pictorially, what's in that numbers chart. The November 30-16 tracks really, really well, that projection. The 2015 doesn't track well, and I think it's just because we're on such a steep decline, and they were in the beginning of projecting out of that.
Is that the one we had to redo over, because it was so out of whack?
I don't recall the circumstances as to why it was redone. I have copies of both, though.
Yeah, I remember one was just, it was way out of whack.
That's what I'm thinking of.
Right. I think that the 2000, well, we had Prada before that, which was completely out of whack, because if you went by him, like, McMo, Malone, and McBroom in 2017-18, Prada had something like 2,700 kids, like, so he was like, they were 300, he was 300 all from them, but he was, they were still showing a decline, and then when we had it updated, then it was more in line.
And again, I know we'll talk in more detail about this chart, but it's interesting in looking, I didn't know all these things until I researched this in more detail. What a number of other districts are doing is they're doing these studies annually because it's not just us that are seeing these changes in demographics. I spoke at length this morning with Gary Chelfy, the superintendent in Trumbull. They're seeing a similar phenomenon to us, and they're seeing growth. Easton Redding, Weston, they're seeing decrease, but not as much decrease as they were before. So, this area is seeing change that counters the, what was thought originally four and five years ago. The other, so the things that they're doing is they're, a lot of them, you can see, it's listed as annual. They're doing annual updates to see where they are. Some of the other districts, I was surprised by this, Region 15, Southbury-Middlebury, and somebody else.
And Wilton has, too.
And Wilton, they're using multiple demographers. I mean, that's a really expensive way to do it, but that's another way, I mean, Region 15 actually has hired three demographers, and they're triangulating the data between the three demographers, because they're trying to get the best numbers dialed in, just strategies other districts are using, not advocating, just sharing information on that.
So, there's really a monopoly on the firms. There's only three that I can see.
Well, here's the thing, we did our homework with this. We know the backstory on Prada, so we didn't spend a lot of story there, because we've had a lot of time there, because we know the story on that. And NESDEC, we did spend some time researching them. Initially, we got a quote from them that was very low. We thought, hmm, why is that, how other districts are using them? As we researched it more and more, you have to be a member of NESDEC in order to get their services, an annual fee, and then you get it. By the time we added it all up, there was not much difference between NESDEC and Mylona McBroom. Then when I spoke with Wilton, factually, what Kevin Smith, the superintendent, shared there is, within the first year with NESDEC, their kindergarten enrollment was 50 students off, and so he was not happy with them.
Wow.
So, that really, this is an imperfect science. As you can see, the firm's listed there. It's not by accident that you see one more than the others.
Yeah.
Again, who gets it most perfect is what it comes down to, or who gets it most accurately. It's never going to be right on. Any other questions on that?
It's interesting what Choffey does, Jack. He does it for kindergarten every year.
Yeah.
And then every three years, K through 12.
Correct. It's interesting. It's a post-effective way of getting some kind of, you know, regularity to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next item is review of the fund activity statement, and Frank, if you'd give us an update on that. You have a handoff, too, don't you?
Yes, I do. If you turn to the, in the Board of Agenda package, the financial section, specifically on page 31, is the enterprise and special revenue funds, which gives a breakdown of Delt Ed enrichment and intermurals, pool use, greenhouse, field trips, parking fees, et cetera. I've been reviewing this, and I had trouble understanding it. I didn't know what your budget projections were, because you don't adopt a budget for your special revenues. It just, I just didn't know what that column meant.
Frank, we just have to find the page here with.
Because we don't have a whole packet. We have.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We have.
That's on the link, though.
Links, is it in this link?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which link?
It's in the, I guess, the fun activity link?
It's only 19 pages. And you're saying it's page 31?
Yeah, I'm.
Oh, yeah, there's a fun link, okay.
Right.
But I mean, do we, we probably do need it, right?
Okay.
Yeah, it would be good to see it.
It's not necessary. I just, I'm going to hand off the new format.
Sure, okay.
There it is, right there.
For special.
For the special revenue funds, yeah.
Page 18 on the PDF.
Thank you.
Oh, page 18.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I was reading the number on the bottom of the page. What's being handed out now is a reformatting of the special revenue funds. I just want to take a moment or two and go over it with you. It's the same listing of the programs, and then we have, the first column you'll see is the end of the year, June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. And there's no budget column, because you don't adopt a budget. I mean, it's just carryover. It's what month funds are in the carryover. It's, we show the end of the year, June thirtieth, and the numbers, what was in the statement as of June thirtieth, and the opening balance July one has to be the same number, which are closed, and on these funds, you carry them over each fiscal year. It's not like your operating budget. So you carry these over. So for clarity, we just showed opening balance July one, two thousand eighteen, and then the next column, receipts year-to-date, all the money taken in that, since July one, two thousand eighteen, all the expenditures through that fiscal year, and then any encumbrances. You'll see there's no encumbrances, because everything was closed out with the close of the fiscal year. And then we're showing the closing balance on June thirtieth, the end of the fiscal year. So the closing balance, then, shows the net amount from your opening balance, and the revenues taken in, and the expenditures, any encumbrances, and this shows you your closing balance. If you compare this to what you normally get, you'll see, it looks a little cleaner. There's no pennies involved. Ours have the pennies in sense, but looking at reports like this, it's easier to see it without, without the pennies involved. So it cleans it up quite a bit. And if you compare this format to the one that was in your package, the one you've been using, we think it's a cleaner, easier format to use, and the numbers are slightly different than the one you received, because you received yours, it was dated June, it was run on July ninth, and since then, we've closed out any open purchase orders and made adjustments. There's some shift in some of the monies. So the numbers are slightly different than what you received in the report dated July ninth, two thousand and nineteen. So, anyway, we want to present this to you so that when you receive this each month, I just think it's easier to understand what's happening within those funds.
And then based on your feedback too, we were going to look at using a similar format with our grant lines as well, correct?
Yes, yeah, yes.
Why would diesel gasoline be on special revenue funds?
I'm sorry, didn't hear the question.
Diesel gasoline is listed on special revenue funds? How, how is diesel gasoline a special revenue?
Yeah, I don't know. There's been no activity, there's been no activity in that account, and for some reason, it had been carried there, and I'm not sure what, you know, what the old history was on it.
But we'll look into that, Shannon, and I'm going to let you know.
Yeah. Maybe there was a gasoline sale, we were selling gas.
Yeah, there was, there was some activity back in seventeen eighteen, and it got closed out, so you've had no activity now for, for well over a year. So, and we went back, and we found one account, there's been no activity for over five years.
Was that miscellaneous?
We just carried. And that happened to have been the greenhouse.
Oh.
The greenhouse, there's been no expenses, no revenues, it's just money sitting there. So what we're working on right now is evaluating each of the accounts, and we're going to start working on trying to eliminate some of the deficits that you're seeing in these accounts, and seeing what, what surpluses there may be in individual items that we can apply, if there's no restrictions, what monies we can apply to the deficit that show up, particularly under the enrichment and intramural programs. Because some of those deficits, I went back, we did analysis over last, since nine, two thousand fifteen, and some of those deficits go back to that, that time period.
So like, Mastic Fresh Fest is a deficit?
It's a deficit that we carry every year, year over year?
Yes, yes. Your, your balances carry over, your deficits carry over.
Yeah.
So if that, so if it's in parentheses, Mastic Fresh Fest is a deficit of almost six thousand dollars, like, how, how, like, so this year was eight hundred dollars to do that, like, where did the money come from, I wonder?
Well, I don't understand why it's in special revenue, but it's budgeted.
Is it budgeted under something else?
It is. Budget for Fresh Fest, for, I mean, all we pay for is stipends and then a little bit of supplies, it's a few dollars.
It sounds like this needs to really be dealt into.
So it's probably built into the Mastic budget, right?
I thought it was.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we had a meeting with the principals around arts and informa, arts and.
Imagination.
Imagination, thank you, that's the word. And taking a look, because that too carries a number of deficits, so this is an ongoing project.
Yeah, but it's.
Arts and imagination and the intramurals all.
Correct.
Almost, almost all are in deficit.
But that's probably not accurate, I would imagine. I think, I think it's all the money maker.
No, it would be accurate. It would be receipts that the parents paid for the program, and then I would imagine that expenditures are what we've actually paid out, so the problem is.
We're not budgeting anything for those.
But we're not flexing enough for what we're.
So we just run deficit in those line items every single year.
So this is our means to start to correct all those things. We've met with the admins, everybody's aware. We still have other areas, as you can tell, that we need to clean up within it, but we have a clear template that gives us a path to make this clearer in terms of being able to understand it, and more importantly, to get everything into the black and balanced.
Yes.
So worthy effort.
Is everybody comfortable with the format?
Yeah.
Yeah, I like the format, it's just.
The numbers are confusing.
Yeah, it's eye-opening, and like, like has been said, we need to dive into it.
Right. What's going on?
What's going on? Do we continue with these programs and doing better budgeting?
Right.
We can't have these deficits roll over every year.
Right. Yeah, agreed. It was.
But I have a question for actual deficits, I guess, if it's like, for example, Fresh Fest, it's not really, you know what I mean? I think it's just a matter of how we're reporting it.
Right, and where.
Oh, great, Shannon, yeah. Because if it's in the budget, then we find it important, so it's there. We're already, habit set.
Right, Fresh Fest is.
And it's very important, by the way.
Yeah, I love, yeah, but yeah, I think it's just, it's just a matter of.
And is it in another line item, and this is a duplicate?
Right. This was a good example of how we spent our summer.
One of the little things we dealt with over the summer.
Yeah, it was a very busy summer, and, yeah, this is an example of the kinds of things that are coming from it to get us to a better place.
We need some extra strength to tie it on for that kind of a summer.
Yeah. All right, so we're okay with that format, and this is the kind of update you'll see moving forward.
Good.
And then Frank, you want to give us an update on the closeout from eighteen nineteen?
Yes, the board received, again, because this goes back to your July package, you had received a report showing the balance that you had left in your account, and the one that was in your package had a balance of a little over three hundred thousand dollars. And the reason, there were many, many changes since then. The report, if you look at it, you'll see it was dated July tenth, it said you had a balance of three hundred and two thousand dollars, and that was a result of the town working closely with the Board of Ed, because we saw this massive deficit reaching the Board of Ed. It was very, very serious.
Within the health insurance.
And, yeah, and it was mostly the health insurance. And so we did work with the town, and in closing out, the report that I ran a few days ago, which we've conveyed to the towns, that we're turning back to the town four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Now that is what we did not spend. As of this date of August twenty-ninth, we've closed out all purchase orders. We liquidated a lot of purchase orders, we affected the July statement, we closed out purchase orders and A balances, went back there. The town worked with us very, very carefully, because even though we were showing four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, we could not have been at that number without the town. They helped us with the health insurance tremendously. I mean, almost four hundred thousand dollars of that is help directly from the town for health insurance. And without that help, I don't think we could have made it. I don't think we could have made it. And so that four hundred and thirty-four thousand, we notified the town, we're turning it over to them, so that doesn't go into any ten dash two forty-eight A, one percent figure. The town will be using that, and the town will be looking to see which accounts are going to, whether they're going to be pay the health insurance account, or what they're going to do with that, you know, with that money. But as I say, I was very impressed working here with the close working relationships that the Board of Ed has with the town. It's not that way in every district.
Right.
And when you're facing a deficit like we were facing, which was, at one point, when I first started on May tenth, it was over a million dollars. I mean, it really was very, very serious, and it's not one that you could start balancing your books on. You could not have done this alone. So.
And I want to thank Frank for all of his efforts in pulling this together for us. Questions for Frank? Yeah?
Yeah, Frank, that includes the security grant, getting that money in?
Yes, the, thanks, thanks for bringing that up, Dave. We poured over seven hundred thousand dollars into your operating budget. The security grant, the ten dash two forty-eight A account, the.
Special revenue.
Special revenue. And then we took all of those, and we just kept pouring these large amounts of money that you had in other places, and we had to use that to help balance it out. And that goes towards the fact that, I say, we finished with four hundred and thirty-four thousand, it's the last moment that the town helped us with four hundred thousand, just on the health insurance. So there's no way you could have finished the year. Your health insurance was just, just too enormous.
Yeah.
And the board voted to change that effective July one. You're now, you've gotten away from a self-insurance program, and now on the state health plan, so, see where that goes.
Any questions for Frank? And budget freeze over the summer months, the principals were a huge help. One of the things we started to do was outline line items where we could find some efficiencies and some savings to get a jump on the budget freeze. We are, we are implementing a budget freeze so that we can save some money to help with the insurance during this fiscal year, and that is something that, you know, we're, we're doing proactively to, to help to address insurance, insurance moving forward. Also, some positive news from niche dot com. They ranked the Monroe Public Schools eighteen in best schools in the state of Connecticut, and they create the rankings based on data from the State Department of Ed, as well as reviews and surveys. And we ranked seventeen out of one hundred and thirty districts for best places to teach, seventeen out of one hundred and thirty-two for safest school districts in Connecticut, and eighteen out of seventeen for best overall districts in Connecticut. So, you know, by itself, not to be all and end all, but another nice affirmation of the great work that all our staff does on a daily basis, so, so thank you all for the great work that goes on. And next, we have special education update. Kay?
We also have a smooth opening. We are short two staff members right now, though, so if anyone knows anyone, we need a psychologist at the Monroe L preschool, and we need a special ed, well, we're interviewing for special ed teacher at Stepney, so Bruce and I are interviewing next week. But we do have two positions still open in the district as well. From last June to this September, we're ten less in special ed, so we're happy with that number. We had twenty-two graduate. We'd have seventeen enrolled over the summer, but we're also still working on the numbers of kids that have moved out, that we're still trying to figure out if they've moved out permanently, or if they're just not attending school yet. So again, October one, we'll have a better handle on the enrollment, but right now, we're about down ten from last June, so. And that was with several students moving in over the summer, a couple of them at high cost, so we're looking at that as well. Frank and Jack, myself and Darlene, meet on a monthly basis, so we have another meeting coming up this week, reviewing the tuition and transportation lines, but things right now are kind of working out nicely. But again, there's a lot of flexibility in that, depending on what happens with enrollment numbers as they go up and down. We are currently looking at transportation efficiencies by looking at ride shares with other districts, with a couple of out placements that we currently have. Our neighboring towns also have a placement there, so we're exploring those options, and then we're exploring other in-district transportation efficiencies as well. So we're still working on those, but that's what we're looking at. Other efficiencies we're looking at is getting our staff, building capacity with our parent educators and our behavior staff, so that we can eliminate some of the outside behavioral contracts that we have. So they're training our staff so that we eventually can eliminate them, because training our own staff is much cheaper than having an outside agency. So that's where we are in special ed. We had a smooth opening as well. All of our out placements have also started. A couple of transportation glitches, but all's been resolved, starting today, so.
So compared to what we had budgeted for this current fiscal year, compared to what we have right now out placed, so we're the same?
A little bit. We had a couple that are leaving, and we had another one move in. So I don't have yet tuition costs for the ones that moved in, because that's a new placement for us, so I'm still working on numbers.
Okay.
But I will, should hopefully have that with Jack and Frank by this Thursday's meeting. But I will continually update you on that, because that's just an ongoing thing.
Any other questions for Kay?
Just, if I may, our special education attorney, is that the same attorney we use for all the courses? Is that just a specialty?
It's specialty.
Have we had that attorney for a long time? Are you happy with that attorney? I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yes, yes, yes.
Have we bid it out? Should we bid it out, or?
It would be hard, and I've had this discussion, it would be hard to bid out now, because some of the cases that they've been involved with have been years. So getting someone up to snuff on those cases and stepping in would be a difficult task.
She's very good.
Yeah.
Well, we do have a very.
The one we use is very good.
Yeah, okay. Well, it's good to hear that, okay.
So in terms of population, we're still at about fifteen percent, fourteen percent, approximately.
I didn't, I didn't do the overall, because I didn't have all the numbers today when I was doing my math, so I don't know. But it's about four thirty to whatever the number was that Jack just gave you for, it's a rough, but I think it's rough. What was your number for?
My number was, it's right on the bottom of the sheet in the yellow column there.
Where are we at, thirteen percent?
Thirty-one, thirty-six, yeah, I thought we were thirteen-ish last year.
Someone can do the math, I can't do math.
I think roughly, right now, roughly about the same number. I mean, that, things haven't shifted enough where there'd be a significant change.
Okay.
Yeah. We were close, we were approaching fourteen last year.
Fourteen percent.
Fourteen you did, okay.
So Kay, I know how hard you work in the system. I've known you forever. I guess, just to ask, I know you know this from what's happened in the past, I, I think for all of us, I'll speak for myself, the reason why we asked you to come at these is to just let us know when you don't like the itch you're getting, so we don't have to wait until May to worry about it.
Yeah.
That kind of leads to my question, it's a good segue to my question. Is it too soon to, to speak to how, what our budget looks like, and what our numbers and our expenses look like, and how aligned are they?
Right now, we are pretty much aligned. We were over in some the first month we met, and we were under in others. But again, it's, until I get the people and the places in place, I won't know, definitely. But hopefully by October, we'll have another update, and I'll just keep you up to month, month. But from what I budgeted last year, there are definitely more kids that are out of district at the, from the October. But we had updated you, Jack and I had updated you at the end of the year. We sent a spreadsheet, kind of talking about kids that were in the pipeline, so those numbers are pretty consistent to what they are now.
Does, do you mean that we have more outplaced than we planned for?
We have more outplaced than I planned for last November, yes.
Is the money, but like, at that point, at whatever point you realized that, is there, is there money for that?
Again, it's kind of, we have to look at where things are being washed because at that time there was other kids that were moving back into districts. So again, it's just kind of looking down, once I get my October one numbers and who's where and what, I'll have a better handle on where we are budget wise.
That's fair enough.
If you remember those big spreadsheets that we did line by line, you know, we can update that so you can see, you know, where we are.
And again, a lot of the kids that are outplaced right now aren't going to necessarily be excess cost kids, which I know you guys don't want to hear that. But that's, their, their tuitions aren't high enough to meet the threshold. But we'll talk about that a little more next time as well. And I believe we have a workshop coming up.
Correct. Yeah, twenty-third. Yeah.
Any new laws coming down the pike?
Not, just the BCBA one that anyone that's doing behavioral stuff has to be overseen by a BCBA, which we're covered. Other than that, I'm not familiar with any big ones that are going to impact us.
Yeah, we have JP coming to talk about the state law updates. I don't recall, Joe, do you recall anything in the CAPE policy manual on special ed? I don't. No.
Give us a break for a year.
Yeah. Any other questions for Kay? So we'll have these monthly. We have them internally monthly with the board monthly. And then we have the workshop on the twenty-third. One of the things Kay and I were talking about today that might be really good for the twenty-third is if you want to just start to send questions that you have to have answered on the twenty-third, that would be a good way for us to design the workshop because then it's about things you might want to know more about or want more information. Okay? Thanks, Kay.
Thank you, Kay.
And lastly, just a reminder that another year has gone by. So the CAPE, CAPS conference is coming up and that's on November fifteenth and sixteenth. We go, we've gone on the fifteenth, the Friday.
Just Friday only.
Yeah. And if you're interested, please send Donna or myself an email and we'll get everybody registered. And it's a good day, right?
It is a good day. It's very interesting. The workshops they have are very informative.
They are.
Yeah. The, the law and the policy workshops are especially good. They really know what they're talking about. So good opportunity if you can take the day.
Yeah. And it's just, we just do the Friday and we do not stay for dinner.
No, we don't.
Mystic Marriott?
What?
Mystic Marriott?
Yes, which isn't actually Grotten.
Yeah.
Mystic sounds better.
Mystic sounds better, but it's actually, but we usually just go for like the breakfast and then the lunch and then the afternoon workshops. And then where we leave, we never stay for the dinner session, which starts at like five forty-five. So it gives you an idea like we're gone before five, well before five forty-five.
Yes, ma'am.
All the sessions are pretty much done by then.
Oh yeah, reception starts at five. So we're out by four.
Boy, this keeps getting earlier.
Well, you have to get up there early. So you're up there by like seven thirty.
But it's, you have to skip it a jump from the casino. So.
Earlier start to your weekend.
It is very interesting. If you've never been to one of their conferences, it's a really great, great event. They do put on a really good conference between CAPE, which is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and CAPS, which is the Connecticut Associations of School Superintendent. So it's kind of a joint thing between the two. And they have different presenters come in to, you know, do the different workshops. So it is very informative. And I've always found it very helpful and interesting to, to learn what's going on. All right. Anything else, Jeff?
That's what I have. Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions for Jeff before we move on? All righty, we will, we have no old business, but we will move on to new business. And the first item is approval for the SAT half day at Massey, which is going to be on March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty. Do I have a motion to approve that and make that a half day here at Massey? Thank you, Jerry Dove, second. Thank you, Christine. Any discussion on it? This again, we don't build it into our calendar because we don't know what the day is until well after our calendar is already established. So we have to then unfortunately go back and add these half days in for these, this reason.
And just, you know, it was a really simple call. The state gave us, gave us two dates. One date was during our April vacation. This is the other date.
And it's only Massey that has a half day, not the other ones?
It's only Massey. It would be only Massey, yeah. Because that's the only one that's doing the, doing the SAT. The other schools are not affected at all. Anybody else? All in favor of the motion? Thank you. Motion passes. Item B, which is the approval of transfer of budget object lines for the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And I do have a specific motion for that. The motion reads, resolved pursuant to the auditor's recommendations, the Board of Education hereby approves the following budget transfers for fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. From two thousand series benefits, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. Six thousand series supplies, a hundred and twenty-two thousand, oh seventy-one for a total of four forty-five, four eighty-one. Going to the following accounts, series one thousand salaries, two hundred and seven thousand, three oh seven. Three thousand series professional services, two hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight oh one. And finally, the eight thousand series bonds slash miscellaneous, six thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars for a total of four forty-five, four eighty-one so that it is in balance. Do I have a motion to approve that? Thank you, Shannon Dove, second. David, discussion, we need to make sure that everything.
Frank could elaborate if you have questions too.
This is what the auditors are saying for the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year.
Yes. It's not your individual line items. It's the grouping of line items. So now all the salaries, all your certified salaries, all your non-certified salaries, all the overtime stipends. Those are all the salaries accounts. And the benefits, it's just not the health insurance. It's the dental insurance. It's life insurance. It's workers' compensation. So the auditors look at the large grouping is where they get concerned and your, these numbers, and you're not adjusting expenditures. You're adjusting the budget, making changes. So the budget now will be more in line with how you ended up the fiscal year. And it's basically an academic bookkeeping procedure. So we follow what the auditors recommend.
To reflect what really occurs.
Right. So then when you do your budget next year, it doesn't look like you're fully out of whack by three hundred thousand dollars. Because you're like, oh wow, why is that going up by three hundred thousand dollars? You know what I'm saying? Where it's really, you know, salaries, you know, you're putting it two hundred thousand into the budget so that because it, it reflects what you've actually expended. So you're not changing what the expenses are. You're changing what the budget is.
I got it.
And the memo details all the other funds that we had to apply in order to make this work. We talked about the security grant, the ten dash two forty-eight, the excess cost and special fund balances. So you have in writing then the actions that were taken.
Donna, this is the audit that we asked for, was it April?
No, this is the regular town audit.
Regular town audit.
Yeah. Yeah, totally two different things. This is the town audit that what their findings were and what they've asked to be done.
Frank, you agree with all of those recommendations?
The auditors, yes.
And just so you know, Frank has gone through the auditor's report line by line.
Well, then he's worked with them.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions on this? All right. We have a motion to make this, these recommendations. All in favor? Great. Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to item C, which is the proposal to name the weight room at Massey High School. And it will be proposed to the board for their approval to name the weight room at Massey High School, the Carl Botner Wellness Center. Do I have a motion to approve that? Thank you, Shannon.
Very gladly.
Jerry, do I have discussion on it? We've already heard from one public participation.
Carl Botner has touched so many people here in Monroe and so many students with, with his genuine kindness and, and teaching life. Like, like Patrick said, it's, it's true. He's, he's, was a great help to my family, you know, my, my Riley family, my siblings. And I just know he's got his heart into every, everything he does and, and it's helped so many people. It's, that's a great fit tribute to him.
He is a great man. He really is.
Anybody else?
Joe did a beautiful tribute.
A half century, a half century of, of service to this community. He's amazing. When I started as a, as a student here in the, in the mid-eighties, the weight room, if you've ever been in the auction, there's a little closet in there and that was the weight room. And there's a little universal machine in there, a squat rack and a, and a bench press. And that was it. And, you know, Carl was in there every night. He would wipe out all the equipment. He would, he had a little bag of tools. He would fix anything that, anything that broke. And then as the ages kind of went on and some of these fitness companies went out of business, he would kind of go in and get some free equipment. And it kind of moved out into the, out into the aux, out into the aux jewelry gym. And then in two thousand and three, when we, when we did, redid the, the school during the renovation, they re, they put in a new weight room. And he was instrumental in the design of it and, you know, all throughout, you know, up until just a couple of years ago when he could no longer do it. Yeah, he was still, you'd find him in there first thing in the morning, last thing at night, you know, working on weight room stuff. And I couldn't agree more with what you said, Shannon. He's touched the lives of so many people in this community. It's really, there's very few people like him. You put him in the same category as an Ed Butler and Dave Strummer.
The funny thing is, so he, Joe did a beautiful piece about Carl with the Massey faculty. And what was that, last Friday? The day's, Monday, it was last Monday. Wow. And so today I walk in to check on everybody coming in off the buses at Massey and who I see. This is after Carl had said, I'm really retiring. He's back in the school today. He's back volunteering again. The guy just continues to give. Yeah, he's amazing.
Awesome.
It would, it would almost shut down, I think, without, we're just so used to seeing him here for so long. I don't think, you know.
He is Mr. Massey.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right. So I have the motion to approve to the Massey Weight Room to be named after Carl Botner. The Carl Botner Wellness Center, sorry. All in favor? Great. Thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to item nine D, which is what we added, which is the demographic study. And Jeff's going to hand out some more stuff.
One more piece of paper, yeah.
So how all this came about, we had discussed previously in our Board of Education meeting about doing an updated demographic study. And we had decided that we were not interested in doing one because of how inaccurate they really are. And then what ended up happening is in our meeting with the town back in June, the town had asked us because of some proposals and projects that are coming up on that, their ends, that they're starting to see. They had asked us to move forward with a demographic study to see how certain aspects of these projects would affect student enrollment within the school system. So this is how this came about after we had said we did not want to do an update. So they are the ones who actually initiated it and asked us to move forward with this proposal of doing a demographic study and doing the update. So I'll give, let Jack take over on what, you know.
Thanks. So it's a two-parter. Ken and I talked again today and there is dialogue that the town is having with developers about mixed use. That's been going on and it would be a way to develop portions of town that haven't been developed yet. If that goes through with mixed use, you have some commercial retail, that kind of thing, but you also have living space, typically apartments. If those come in and they're one bedroom, probably less impact on the schools. If they're multiple bedrooms, there's going to be impact on the schools. So from a demographic standpoint, providing that information, working with the town to understand what impact that may or may not have to us. And then also to help the town in developing policy with planning and zoning, it's a two-way street. So that's part one, is trying to understand new development for the town and, and helping them as well as helping to understand what we might need to do should that development come in. Part two is updating our information to have a better understanding of where we're headed. We can see our numbers have changed over time. We've talked about this in previous years. You know, the numbers were going down. They're, they're not now. We see these gains, if not anything, we're flat, you know, and some gain. But that wasn't originally what everybody was saying was going, going to happen. So updating this to have a better understanding of where we'll be in the coming years would provide benefit in trying to budget as efficiently as we can and program as efficiently as we can, knowing what kind of students will be coming in the future.
Well, and I have even a question based on that because I know we've been doing a Jockey Hollow STEM study about when we can reunite. Well, based on, based on where we had thought we were going to be with Jockey Hollow, now it seems like it's flat. That says to me, there's no way to be reunited in the two years that you guys have been talking about.
Excellent question. Jack, Joe and I got together this summer and we did our homework for the STEM committee members. And we did all our stuff. Jack did a great job putting together mock schedule, mock staffing. We have all that in the works. But we kept coming back to that colored chart that shows, remember the number of students? And the numbers really don't seem to be going our way. So again, you know, we can, we can run out. We can extrapolate the current numbers that we have, but we can't factor in those other things that are going on. I'll give you one example of many. What we're seeing is our kindergarten numbers aren't over the top. They're bigger. But if you look at them compared to other classes that are above, they're smaller classes. But what we're seeing is that our, our enrollments, like grade three through middle school, that's where we're picking up the kids. So that kind of data is important because if you don't see the kids in kindergarten, but you have them by the time you get to middle school, we're using everybody that's in the pipeline and it's not an accurate depiction of what we're going to have in middle school. Which really, if that holds true where we continue to get kids, grades three through eight, the STEM study is irrelevant because we just don't have the room.
But how would you predict how many third graders are going to move into town? It's an unknown. I mean, you just don't know.
Yeah.
Because they're obviously, they're not in Monroe. They're coming from other towns.
And this is where-
There's no way, there's no math formula that's going to predict that.
Yeah, but what are, they're probably looking at what's driving that, right? So if somebody's coming in with third graders, fourth graders, it's probably their second home, right? So what, what, what properties does Monroe have in town that are available that would be a good second home?
And I would think, and again, I'm not the demographer, so I can't speak with, with confidence on this. But I would hope, and in my, in our dialogue with them moving forward, if we go through with this, you know, I could see discussions like, where are these families moving from? You know, what is it, you know, what kind of communities are they moving from to come to Monroe? And then, you know, what are the patterns that we're seeing over time with that? Because really, you think about a demographic study. It is really about looking at patterns, you know, in grades and in birth rates and trying to use that to extrapolate to say, this is where you're going to be in the future.
Jack, our last one was three years ago?
Sixteen was the update. Yeah.
Fifteen. And what would a new study cost?
Eleven five, eleven thousand five hundred. Yeah. It's gone up significantly. So I can give you the background on that. It was originally twelve thousand five hundred. And I said to Mr. Zubba from Mylan McRoom, I said, Mike, that's a lot more than last time. It was seventy-five hundred bucks. And he said, the state now charges us for the information they used to give us for free. And so that's what led us to looking at the NESDEC, thinking, okay, we'll find a cheaper way, better way if they're as good and they're less, then it's fine. The cost really was not significantly different. So the other thing that we did is we went to CES. CES was able to get a consortium price for, because you can see how many districts are using Mylan and McRoom. That dropped the price still further, the thousand bucks, to at least squeeze something out of it and get us the best quote available.
So if, I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's their money, it's our money. If, if Monroe is asking for it, are they going to pay for it? Is it coming out of our operating budget? Is it coming out of their operating budget? Right? I mean, that's, yeah, it's, you know, I'm just trying to figure out where the money.
We've already said no to it. I mean, would they be, I mean, do we know the town would be, have any interest? I mean, they're doing this based on the fact that it's potential development, right?
Right, right.
So, I mean, I think it would be the obvious question is, would there be any?
Any help?
Any help with doing this? I mean, we can, we can ask that question of them and, and see if they'd be willing to do that.
I've already asked, but I'm really, it was fuzzy.
It was fuzzy. Okay.
I did ask. I'm playing devil's advocate a little bit. I understand what you're saying, but to what Frank just said, the town just helped us out greatly with our budget not too long ago.
Right. That's what I was thinking.
And ninety percent of this helps us.
Understood.
Versus the town. I, it's worth asking the question, but I, I think after the last few months, you know.
It's a good point. I never thought of it when I said it.
Well, like you said, it all balances out in the end.
Yeah, I mean, it's-
It comes from the same people.
It comes from us. It's our money.
Comes from us.
Yeah. Well, that was, that was kind of what I was, my next question was, do we have the money somewhere in the budget? Because I know we didn't budget for it. So where would it come from? Because it can't touch a classroom.
I think we're looking at operations. Yeah. We're looking at our operations lines in terms of fiscal, the, the plant side of things. Because really, it is a plant, plant side of things. How do we use the space? How are we going to use it moving forward?
My problem is they're, they're just so inaccurate. My problem is, they're just so inaccurate, and that's a lot of money to spend. I feel like, based on some of the results we've gotten in the past, I can go to Walmart, buy a Ouija board for five dollars and come out with the same number.
Is that, Jack, could that be why some of these towns do it annually?
I think that's in large part why they're doing it annually.
Okay.
And, and, you know, it's funny, Ellen, with the other thing I was gonna mention...
One thousand dollar Ouija board.
The other thing that demographers will say, which I think this part they're accurate on, is if you look at the grade-by-grade predictions, they're not as accurate as when you look at aggregate. So if you look at middle school projection, elementary projection, high school projection, or total projection, those are more accurate than when you chunk it down further. If you look at, you know, what I gave you in, in this line chart, granted it was the sixteen update, but they were within one percent going three years out, I mean...
But some of the studies we did, they had us at a population of zero by 2030. I mean, that's totally ridiculous.
Right, Proudo's way off, right?
I'm not gonna mention names, but I'm just gonna say one study.
I just did. And then the initial, as you can see, the first one from Malone and McRum was not as accurate, it was not. The second update was. The second update was a lot cheaper, it was fifteen hundred bucks as a follow-up. So, you know, I haven't asked about follow-ups, but, you know, that's just food for thought.
Right, I think what we have to, you know, kind of discuss and kind of decide is, is this worth the money, the eleven thousand five hundred? And I would say, we need to look at it for, okay, the town, so like, if we have this mixed-use property, if they approve it, and then all of a sudden we get blindsided with a hundred and, a hundred new kids, two hundred new kids, what do we do?
There's a cost to that, too, right?
Right, there's a cost to that. But then we also need to look at it quite honestly, we are in the midst of a Jockey Hollow STEM study, that we're moving forward thinking in two years, we're gonna unite, and we've actually already informed the sixth graders, hey, just FYI, you may not be in STEM, and, you know, for the whole three years. Well, based on this, I'm thinking to myself, we're moving forward with this, and that's not, just not accurate. So are we now telling parents something different? And we're not even having accurate information to them, because what do we say in another year? They said, mm, yeah, our enrollment numbers were completely lost, but why didn't you update them? We didn't want to spend the money.
That was my point that I didn't want to say, but I'm happy you did. Why doesn't town council do the study? Why doesn't P&amp;Z or Finance do the study?
You know...
I'm agreeing with what you're saying, Donna, and I was thinking the same thing. Why isn't it coming from us?
It's an interesting thing, you know, I guess the other way to look at it is, we are being given the opportunity to provide feedback to a town commission on their policy. I don't think that would happen in every town, where they would say to the Board of Ed, you know what, you're given the opportunity to give us feedback about how to shape our policy for the benefit of kids in this town.
So then what do we do with STEM? I mean, that's still the underlying...
Well, quite honestly, I'm thinking, you know what, like, and I was a no last year, an adamant no, that I didn't want to spend the money, but now looking at the STEM thing, what, what happens if we find out that that's just not plausible? Shouldn't we know that now before everybody's wasting their time continuing on a project and on a path that's just not realistic?
It's a great point, Donna.
I mean, because a year ago, I was an adamant no, we're not wasting the money to do this, but now I'm thinking, just for that perspective, we better have our ducks in a row before we're telling people things, because we've already told them that, and now that doesn't seem to be accurate, and it doesn't seem like we will be able to unite in two years. And we should know when we should be able to unite if ever.
There's a potential that thirteen percent of all these new, new move-ins are gonna be special ed. I mean, if our numbers stay true, so that, that, there's a budgetary issue right there, too.
Well, not all special ed has a budgetary impact.
True, true.
Is there a timetable for completion if we move forward?
If we move forward, I've talked with Malone and McRum about this, if we move forward, I'd like to have it finished before we go into budget, and they said that they could do that. Yeah, because really, we need to, we need that info as we go into budget season.
Agreed.
We go into budget season, October, November, I used to write up my studies at, okay?
Yeah.
They can guarantee that?
He's, he said that he would come through on that, yeah.
So the decision is, what are we doing?
Well, we're in a budget freeze, too, I mean. We're in a budget freeze, we got overcrowding in some classrooms, and we're gonna spend money on a study. I just have a lot of problems with that. I don't, I don't think it's something I could support at this time.
Fair enough.
I mean, is there any way we can, I mean, like you said, we are in a budget freeze. I mean, unless we have the money sitting somewhere that we don't know about, which very well may be the case based on your spreadsheet. But, I mean, we perhaps go back to the town, Matt? I mean, this is, seems how this is town-based or driven, anyway?
We can, we can make that ask, the insurance, just so we're clear, they probably helped us in the order of seven hundred grand. At least. At least. And, and the IBNR, they're gonna be helping us with that as we move forward, too. I mean, it's gonna be a big number they're gonna be helping us with.
The combination is gonna be north of a million dollars, cows helping us.
Wow. Now it leads back to what you said, David.
Yeah. Could this...
It's not that we don't want to work with that, we do, and we appreciate it so much, we just are trying to be fiscally responsible and watching every dime.
Yeah, they just helped us, and now they're asking us to go spend twelve thousand dollars on a study that...
May or may not be worth the paper it's written on.
I guess the other thing to consider is, let's, let's say this development does go through, having some indication of, okay, what do we, what do we need to anticipate in terms of capital expenditure? I mean, eleven five is gonna seem like nothing if we have to add classrooms to schools.
Yes, yeah, right.
And you're gonna be talking, in that instance, we're gonna be talking numbers in the millions.
In the millions.
And that's what's being asked of Malone and McRum is to project out with this development, to project our numbers?
Well, it's, what they're, what we're asking them to do is that, based on their knowledge of other communities and stuff that have put in mixed-use buildings, based on how many bedrooms they are, what can you expect for the school system to add with regard to enrollment?
So one piece of that is, when they were wildly off in the past, what they weren't, as a realtor, and I don't know if Jeff is in agreement with me or not, but when they were wildly off in the past, when the, when the populations were going down, Monroe was not going down nearly as much as other towns and districts, it was because what they, what they didn't know, I think, about Monroe is that people keep moving to Monroe for the schools. And I've had so many instances this summer of people wanting to move to Monroe for the schools, that, which is the kids who are not going into kindergarten, the older kids, wanting Monroe schools for their kids and trying to get mortgages and, you know, things like that. So the same, the mixed use could attract more students to Monroe than it would in another town.
Right, because again, remember, these mixed-use buildings are most likely going to be apartments.
Right.
They're not gonna be houses. And as we all know, and I don't know about everybody else, but on Facebook, I see people on a daily basis begging for, is there a rental in Monroe? Where's a rental? I need to rent something in Monroe. Because I want to get into schools.
Right.
So that could have a huge impact on our schools if this, if these proposals for mixed use go through, given the fact that you could have a huge amount of kids moving in for, in these rentals.
And you might not see that in other towns, so that, that could skew our numbers, so they could come up with one number when the reality is instead of being...
But if we have nothing, then we also don't even know. So we could be going into a budget, something goes up, and then all of a sudden, we're like, oh, you have, you know, a hundred new students that we didn't budget for, and we need new teachers, then we're not, you know, so that's the opposite side of it.
Can our elementary schools even support a hundred plus new kids?
Well, this is a good question, again...
Sure, because we were already over four thousand at one point.
Oh, yes.
You'd have to probably redistrict, though.
You would.
You'd have to redistrict the whole town.
Right, here are two other, right?
Possibly.
Two other variables.
Because I'm sure, I mean, Monroe L obviously could support more kids, so I'm thinking you'd have to do a whole redistricting.
Or wherever that mixed use is, you deem that, even if it's in, let's say, on twenty-five in the Stephanie area, you just deem that whole development as a Monroe L.
But then I'm thinking you probably want to look at the whole town to redistrict to make everything more in line and efficiency with busing and everything like that, because there's a lot of inefficiencies right now the way our town...
But that's what some people do, they just say, hey, this new development, regardless of where it is, is all just go into this one school, so that way you just send one bus.
Right.
And, and that's my follow-up. So when you were meeting with the higher-ups, with the town, they must have told you or given you an idea of where it's going and how many they're allowing?
No, these are, these aren't even things that have been submitted yet, these are things that are being talked about by developments.
But there's only certain land use that can be used for mixed use in Monroe. So there's only certain patches that are mixed-use land.
They did not share that with us.
No, I think there's been dialogue with developers and...
There has been, but they haven't shared with you. But they've been shared with...
I'm not sure if they're on the public record at this point.
One is.
One is on the public record.
There's an article on it, Victoria Drive.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, but I'm happy Shannon said what she said. They also, I don't want to use the word, they, they, they need to open up with you, Jack, and let you know where they're thinking and how many, there's gotta be a cap they have in their mind. The town would not sit with the developer and just say, here's mixed-use land use. There's gotta be a cap.
I think they're early in the process. The other thing I'm trying to be careful of, too, is not to share anything on the public record that I shouldn't.
Understood.
Right? So that's, that's part of it as well.
Okay.
Doesn't, how do other towns handle situations like this? Does the builder bear any responsibility with helping out with the study, or...
In terms of demographics?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, this, this poll that I did today, I had a lot of dialogue with all these superintendents. This is part of what they do annually from their operating budget, that's what they're doing. I mean, it's just part of what they do on an ongoing base, basis for the business. I think one of the places where we can find some solace, too, is, I think what we're doing is more cost-effective, we're not doing it annually, we're doing it on a periodic basis to get the information that we need when we need it. So we're getting the information, but not as frequently in a cheaper way. I think that's one other way to, one other piece to consider.
So if you and Frank feel, this is just me speaking, you and Frank feel we can absorb this, you've already looked at the books, you know where we can come up with the money, and you think it's that important? Okay with me, I mean, if, if, if you really have, you've looked at this, you've got the money, there's no problem, for me.
Well, what Jack just said, too, is important, you take eleven five, spread it over three years, three and a half years.
I agree.
Is it too late to take it out of that four thirty-four that we gave back?
Yeah, that would be a different fiscal year, you can't cross fiscal year, sorry.
I love you.
Too late, too late. It's a thought, it's a thought.
Did we see a grown man cry?
Yes.
From an accounting standpoint, no, you are not permitted to do that.
A question for Jack.
Yeah.
If we move forward with the survey, would the town be able to give us some scenarios and what they're thinking? Because if it's in the early stages and they don't know what they're gonna do, there's no reason to doing this.
Yeah.
Because if there's no scenario A, B, C...
Yeah, what are they evaluating?
That's what I was trying to get to, Jack.
Right. What they're, my understanding in talking with Ken, as recently as this morning, is they're looking to us to have some of this information to help drive policies. So what are the impacts of, if we do a one-bedroom, what are the impacts? If we do a two-bedroom or...
Okay, that makes sense.
So that's why they want us in this early on, because really, we're in the driver's seat to help determine what will happen within this district. It's really, it's, it's kind of, it's a nice thing, I don't think this would be happening in other towns.
I agree.
Right, no, I understand that.
I think if we get that type of information, like, let's say, one-bedroom, two-bedroom,
three-bedroom, this number of units, that would be really good for us for enrollment, for looking at the future. I think we could really use that information.
Yeah.
All right, so do we want to do a motion, then?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so you're making a motion to...
I'll make a, a motion to approve the study with Malone and McRum, I think, for eleven five.